Our Father, who art in heaven,
Hallowed be thy name.
Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Thacker. Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Councilmember Monsour.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Present.
Councilmember Perry.
Present.
Councilmember Reesner.
Here.
And Councilmembers Sparr.
Here.
The records show that six of seven members are present this evening. Minutes from November 20th, 2023, regular and committee, the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any questions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under Committee Reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Reesner.
Yes, Madam President. I have a report. Finance Committee was held November 27th, 2023 at 5:30 PM in Tiffin City Hall. Attending were committee members Kevin Reesner, Chris Monsour, John Spar, along with Law Director Brent Howard, Councilmember Cheyenne Thacker, City Administrator Nick Dutroll, Law Director-elect Zachary Fowler, and Mayor-elect Lee Wilkinson. The purpose was to discuss legislation to approve an income tax revision, 23-51, as well as legislation to approve the city's revised investment policy, 23-52, and any other business that comes before the committee. Recently related message from Finance Director Kaufman. She does not have any issues with proposed changes to the policy. The changes make the policy more up to date than it is currently. She also has no issues with changes to the tax code as they are necessary to comply with Ohio Bill, House Bill 33, that was approved this past summer. Howard noted the tax update code will be in effect by the first of the year to comply with recent changes to state code. Cleans up language about operating loss carryforward for businesses. Net profit tax return extension due dates would adjust from December 15th to November 15th. There was also tax code changes with regards to capping of penalties. An emergency is requested so that this can be effective first of the year. Monsour motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation for the tax code revision, seconded by Spar. The motion passed unanimously. Next, Dutroll reported the Investment Advisory Committee summary from their recent meeting. He noted that there were some important, some improvements identified that would be, that would update the investment policy to best practices. He also shared some early investment plans, which are not yet finalized. Howard noted that 135.03 of the existing code has some vagueness regarding the composition of the advisory committee. He recommended the legislation specifically include the mayor, city administrator, law director, and chair of the Finance Committee and two electors appointed by the mayor, subject to the approval of city council. They would meet once per year. Monsour motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation to approve the revised investment policy and additional legislation to clarify the composition of the Investment Advisory Committee, seconded by Spar. The motion passed unanimously. With no further business, the committee adjourned at 5:41 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Reesner? Yes.
Just one item. And I may have misstated this during the meeting, but the net profit tax return extension due dates, it's currently October 15th and the change is to November 15th. So the minute's had December 15th, when it's currently due.
Gotcha.
Any other questions or corrections? Okay, thank you. Law and community planning, Councilmember Monsour.
I report, Madam President, a law and community planning committee meeting was held on November 27th, 2023, at 5:15 in City Hall. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss mayor's request for legislation 2351 to approve Tiffin's Fire Rescue Division's inclusion in the Black Swamp Emergency Service Unit. Chief Chapel was asked to speak about the proposed legislation. Chapel explained that there are three lieutenants trained in SRT. The members have also completed active shooter and stop the bleed training. This training allows the SRT-trained firefighters to be in what, quote, "hot zone" with the police. Chapel explained that having the firefighters on the scene can ensure police or a victim who's injured can receive immediate care. Chapel went on to say that the right people were in place, and next step is to join the BSESU. Monsour asked if there was a cost, and Chapel indicated there was no cost to city. Law Director Howard explained this was a mutual aid service, and then Chapel explained these would be similar to SWAT medics. Wilkinson motioned to have the Law Director prepare legislation for Tiffin's Fire Rescue Division's inclusion in the Black Swamp Emergency Service Unit. Monsour seconded. Motion passed unanimously with no further business. The committee adjourned at 5:19 PM.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Monsour? All right. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Recreation and public property, Councilmember Wilkins.
No report, Madam President.
Street sidewalks and sewers, anyone from that committee have a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And economic development and downtown planning?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Does anyone see the need to schedule a committee at the whole meeting? And we are now under reports of the officers. Your Honor, Mayor Don Yonatun.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. We have members of TMAC with us tonight for their annual report to council. So we have TJ McKee and Ryan Punyon here with us.
Okay, great. Hello, council. Ryan Punyon, Chair of Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission, presenting our annual report and budget. Alongside with me today is TMAC Vice Chair TJ McKee. TMAC officers include Ryan Punyon, Chair, TJ McKee, Vice Chair, Zoe Blackston as Secretary, and Nick Consolo as the Treasurer. TMAC members include Shannon Bowman, Brad Reese, and Rob Ledwig. Our vision, mission, and values has deeply rooted in the community in the past two years. We still strive to advocate our mission and our goals while promoting and creating opportunities for artists. Activities include traffic boxes, which you have seen in the past, which we put out three more this year. Court Street Market, which coincides with the Downtown Third Thursdays. In this up and coming year, we are going to run it for every third Thursday of 2024 to extend, expand the opportunities for artists to sell and display their artwork. Again, we partnered with the parks for their art camp. We had 70 children. It's completely free, courtesy of TMAC providing the supplies and the volunteers, which the volunteers are local business owners and artists that volunteer their time for that week-long camp. With those being said, I would now like to announce this year's Creative Citizen. The Creative Citizen Award was established by TMAC in 2022. It was created to spotlight individuals going above and beyond their everyday activities to make Tiffin a more creative community. Last year's recipient was Mary Lewis. This year's recipient of the Creative Citizen Award is an art teacher for our city schools, a dance teacher at Dance Unlimited, a choreographer and performer for the Ritz Players, associate choreographer for up and coming Tiffin Columbian Spring Musical, and has completed various murals around Tiffin, including the shops of Wolf Creek, Madison Street Tavern, Clover Club, Jam's Market, and the Tiffin Police Station. As this award states, this individual is being recognized for their creative impact in our community. Thank you for all the motivation and creativity you have given throughout the years. May you continue to inspire us for many more years to come. In special recognition and appreciation for your extraordinary dedication to our community, the Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission and the City of Tiffin is honoring Claudia Steimens with the 2023 Creative Citizen.
Hi. This is really awesome to be able to represent Tiffin. I've lived here my whole life. My passion for art and dance and basically the humanities as a whole came from my classes at Columbian, teaching at, or sorry, dancing at Dance Unlimited, performing at the Ritz. So to be here as an adult and representing all of those organizations is really wonderful. I think about 10 years ago, I was at a city council meeting, and myself and a few other individuals were recognized for winning the Ohio Art Competition. So it's really cool to be back here because that was kind of when I started to love art, and now I love it even more. And I'm giving back to the community with it. So, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, TMAC. Thank you to the businesses that provided the funding and support for me to do these murals and things for them. It's really awesome. I hope that I continue to be able to do more of those, and we can put art all over Tiffin because I can say firsthand from doing them that people love it. I think it brightens up everyone's day when they just walk around the corner and they see something they weren't expecting. So, thank you.
As an award. And then I also have the plaque that will be here at City Hall for many more generations to be added to in the future. And like Claudia said, her murals have made a destination to the unseen parts of our downtown, especially with the Madison Street mural. It gets people into a place and serves a good purpose. So, thank you, Claudia. Get TJ in here, too.
I've seen your beautiful work around town. Absolutely stunning.
Thank you.
Very nice job.
You want to come over here?
Yeah, I'm coming.
Okay. Trying to get her to touch up our mural. It's awful. But she's busy. I don't know if she wants to do it. Now I will hand it over to TJ McKee to finish up our report for Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission. Yep, you can just go right ahead.
Thanks, Ryan.
You're welcome.
So, I will begin by saying the TMAC actually incorporated a nonprofit to actually help support, fund, and drive community engagement within Tiffin. TMAC actually spoke to quite a few of the residents of Tiffin and found that they all wanted to have a part, wanted to be a part, wanted to have a say in the arts. And so this was a way to actually incorporate that, but also allow us a way to actually manage the finances to create some of our projects that we have that are long-term funding. Next slide. So you'll see, these are probably the four major ones you'll see first for 2024, which is the River Wall mural. We've talked about this several times. The River Wall mural, basically, we've spoke to artists, found different things to actually put these into place. And we are looking at doing not just a section of the River Wall, but the entire River Wall that's available. So it'll be actually be seen by the entire community and anyone actually traveling through Tiffin. We are looking forward to doing, supporting the musical arts. So we're looking at doing a music showcase next year as well. And we have quite a few students from TU and Huddleburg who are interested in participating in that also. Another big project, bringing the performing arts, is going to be our Theater in the Round, which is probably an experience that many of our Tiffin residents have not experienced. But it is an actual, all-encompassing and engulfing experience for theater, where there's no walls, there's no fourth wall. And so you get to participate and be a part of the action completely, and you're engulfed in the entire experience. The murals and the sculptures, you've seen some of the work that Claudia did. We are actually going to move on with that as well as offering a couple of other areas in town. The one that's most known right now is going to be done for old fat cakes, which is now the Community Kitchen off of Cherry Alley. And that will be done in 2024 as well. Next slide. So, we wanted to give you guys an idea of what these costs are looking towards, and that's what's costing us. So if you look and you see there's a, for the musician showcase, $15,000, for the citywide murals and the River Wall, and that's just for Phase 1, is about $53,000. The Theater in the Round is $40,000. The traffic boxes that we do and will continue to do, and we're partnering with Claudia as well and her students to do the Phase 3 of those as well. The Sculpture Garden, which we are looking to build sculptures throughout, along Frost Parkway and also throughout downtown. And then, of course, to continue the work that we do with our art camp and some sidewalk art shows as well. So, as you can see, these budgets. And we couldn't come to the city and say, hey, can you give us $130,000 to do all of these things? So we incorporated the foundation so we could have that ability to do those things and provide those and have the community help support this as well. Next slide. So, that's kind of what we did and why we created the foundation. At this time, I wanted to allow anyone, if you had any questions about the foundation or anything that we've done with TMAC, we'll be happy to answer those for you.
Councilmember Jones.
TJ, that River Wall project just sounds like a massive. Are you talking from the river up or dangling down from the top? Or how?
From the river up, it will be, so even when the river rises, it'll actually be able to be seen. And then, when it goes down, you'll still have artwork that'll be shown as well.
I meant Claudia or someone actually doing the?
Yes, there, we have an artist that we spoke to to actually do that.
And that's from the riverside?
Yeah.
Going up versus dangling coming down? I'm just curious. Thank you.
And the artist that we have spoke to is Eric Hens. He's most known for his water towers that he does murals on. But most recently, the Toledo River Wall that they painted, which is a world record for size as a mural, is the artist that we have contacted. And he is above and beyond what is needed to fulfill a job like that. And from what I have talked to him about the concerns of water and debris as the river goes up and down, there is a special marine-type paint that will be durable upon different levels of the weather.
Councilmember Wilkins.
I just had actually two questions. So is it from bridge to bridge? Is that the?
I'll step in again. Currently, we're looking at the south side. If you're on Frost Parkway, in between South Washington and East Perry. So if you're in that Frost Parkway Village, looking towards downtown, you would see our first phase of the mural. It won't be completed as one. It will, it is a very costly project. But I think with establishing something like that in our community, it creates more of a destination, not only for our residents, but for the outside communities.
And then my second question was, where are you in the fundraising piece of the large number that you had? Do you have secured?
So currently, we did receive a grant from the Charitable Foundation for the Arts Foundation. And what is left over from our account this year will be rolled over into that account. So this up and coming year, we'll start out with around $19,000.
Thank you. Law Director.
Yeah. To throw in the mix, my office at the side of the building is the mural that was painted seven or eight years ago. It was funded by Leadership Seneca County class in that year. I think there's still some money left in Leadership Seneca County for maybe the maintenance of that. That mural needs updated, fixed a little bit. And so, if you can help with that and work with, I guess it's my building, so work with me. We'd like to keep it in good shape. You know, it's just, it's, I guess, affected by weather and other issues. So it needs to be touched up on a regular basis. But I'd love to work with you to try to get that accomplished this next year.
I agree. And it's an absolute must that we partnership with people in the community to not only see our vision, but also see their vision.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, there's more, sorry. Councilmember Perry.
Just a couple of points. Love the progress that has been made from year one to now. Think you guys are killing it. Love the goals, the ambitions. It's sweet. So, great job there. Claudia, amazing. Love everything that you've been doing. Is that your husband? All right. I love the brown sweatshirt, too. Just wanted to make sure I told you that. But yeah, I'm in awe of every time I go by anything that you've done. So you deserve a big-time props, so.
He does help, too, because I can't reach some of the.
Oh, yeah. Good, yeah. Good team, man.
Any other questions?
I would just like to comment that your logo is beautiful. Tiffin Foundation logo.
I thought so, too. Was that your design?
It's very nice.
Thanks for getting it approved through everybody.
I did.
I'm kidding. You guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And it is part of the agenda. If you guys want to sneak out, you can.
Yep.
But you're welcome to stay.
I, uh, I feel like I got cheeseburgers or something.
Thank you for coming in. And before I get into my main report, I wanted to announce that we just received word that our Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman, and her team have once again received the Auditor of State Award for 2022. So outstanding job again, Kathy. She does an excellent job. It doesn't surprise me. And we appreciate all you do. Okay, items of interest. The Christmas holiday lights at the fairgrounds, announcing this again, are now open till December 23rd. Their hours are Friday from 6:00 to 9:00, Saturday from 6:00 to 9:00, and Sunday from 6:00 to 8:00. And if you are in line past closing time, you will be permitted in. It's cost $5 per vehicle. I did not make those meetings last Monday night because I was in studio at Channel 11 on Monday, the 27th, for their 4:15 PM segment to talk about Tiffin. It was perfect timing for me because I was able to plug the Kris Kringle Market last Friday, the first, and Saturday, the second. We had our ribbon cutting for the new Ella Street Bridge on Tuesday, the 28th, at 4:00 PM. Very cold out there, but adorable pictures with our five-year-old bridge mascot Elliot. And city engineer Matt Watson warmed our hearts. Are we able to pull that picture up, Liz? Or is it not working? Did we lose pictures? It's an adorable picture. It's worth the wait. We'll go back through the others since she went to all this trouble. There she promoted me before I was on. And there we are with Dan Cummings. Very nice man. Never met him before. Made me feel very relaxed and welcome. Here's our Ella Street Bridge ribbon cutting. And do we have the Matt and Elliot picture? Is that adorable or what? I had the opportunity to thank Elliot for keeping an eye on all the workers for me since I couldn't be down there every day. And let's see. We, speaking of the second annual Kris Kringle Market, this two-day event was a huge success again that kicked off with the tree lighting of the courthouse lawn at 5:15 PM. And it included many events, shopping, and demonstrations, and included the Christmas parade Saturday morning. And then, my office has been working on training packets to assist with the onboarding of all new personnel, starting on January 1st, 2024. This packet has been sent to existing returning members and all of the newly elected. Please go over this packet. We have a special meeting next Monday, December 11th, for this second reading of the budget. And since this will be a very brief meeting, I'm asking everyone that received this packet to attend and stay after to run through this information. And I did talk to Tom. We will be televised. And so we'll be streaming so others can see what we're doing for getting people up to speed. Upcoming events this week, Upcoming events this week, I have invited Mary Lect Wilkinson to join me tomorrow morning on WTTF for my monthly interview on city events. Seven of us, three from Public Works, three from our Tree Commission, and I will be graduating from the Tree Commission Academy on Wednesday. We have been attending classes and doing homework all year and are ready to graduate, hopefully, after we do our PowerPoint presentation. And also that night, we'll be at the ribbon cutting for Sutton Bank at their newly expanded and renovated location out by Westgate. And then I have a budget update before we get to that and this evening's agenda for the first reading. As I've stated previously, revenue was slightly above last year. So we tried to hold to the same budget amount as last year while sustaining raises. We have a change request to the 2024 budget. When we started the process, we were 13% over budget. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman tries to keep us at 5% above. So our staff was asked to make reductions. It was discussed at Department Heads Meeting this morning about non-union employees receiving a 1% to 2%, depending on the staff member, raise when all other union staff was receiving 4%. It will put us slightly over the 5%, but we are recommending to council a compromise of a 3% raise to non-union employees, and we'll look at it again in June 2024 to see if we can go to the 4%. So we're asking if you'll be willing to make these changes as you read through this. And that concludes my report unless you want to ask questions now or if you want to wait and ask questions when it comes up in the agenda.
Do you guys have questions right now, or do you want to wait? Okay, we'll wait, I guess.
Okay. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
No report, Madam President, but I would like to address the question that Councilman Jones asked at the previous council meeting. There was a question about, on the revenue report summary, how we could have percentages above 100%. There were one that was 126% and one that was 252%. And this is a good problem to have. To explain it a little bit, when I'm trying to put the budget together, especially on the revenue section, I try to make sure that I don't overstate revenues because if you overstate something greatly, that could really change the difference between the percentages between revenue and expense. So I set the revenues, and this was our interest income. So I set those at what we were pretty much earning at the time that I set the budget because I wanted to make sure that I didn't overstate it or say that we're going to receive $100,000 when we really only get 50. That could cause a problem in the budgeting process. So I'm happy to say that those interest rates have gone up. So now we are seeing an increase in our interest income. So that's why you're seeing percentages that are above 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sure.
Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of items on the legislation that's in front of you for tonight. To follow up the mayor's comments about the budget and compensation for the non-union employees. Ordinance 23-94 is the annual budget ordinance. The Exhibit A to that ordinance, which is part of your packet and will be what will be introduced tonight, that will be updated at a future meeting before you'll vote on that ordinance. And that updated exhibit will include an adjustment for the additional pay increase. So just be expecting that. You'll need to amend that ordinance by amending with the new Exhibit A when that comes out. So just wanted to alert you to that. And then the next item is Ordinance 23-95. That is the annual pay ordinance. And I wanted to highlight a few of the items in that ordinance. Some of those, the items I'll highlight, were not included in the original draft that you received over the weekend. But I understand, as introduced, it'll include all these items that I'm highlighting. The first on page one, this pay ordinance, we have to note that there has been an increase in the minimum wage in the state of Ohio. So you'll see in the second recital that we identify that the minimum wage is $10.45 per hour, and that is included on certain positions in the pay schedule. In item three of the recitals, that identifies several new aspects of the pay schedule. One of them is it includes new rates of pay for the city prosecutor, which we identify as Assistant Director of Law, and the, what has been identified as Secretary to the Assistant Director of Law. And both of those positions will actually be filled this next year, as I've explained, because we no longer have a contract with the county prosecutor's office, and those two individuals will be coming over as employees. So those are relevant rates of pay that will be used for employees this next year. The next item in that recital three is that the sewer revenue manager, that position is receiving a $2 per hour rate increase. And that is kind of unique because that position, there have been significant additional duties and responsibilities added to that employee. And so for that reason, you know, they kind of stand out that because of what the additional expectations, there is an additional rate of pay of $2 per hour to properly compensate that position. The last item in that Section Three is this is a reminder that a couple of months ago, you approved the municipal court employees to have a two-tier rate schedule for their employees, the new higher rate and then the existing rates. And so this just identifies that in the pay schedule, you'll see, say, for example, bailiff, you'll see bailiff one, and you'll see bailiff two. Bailiff one is the new higher rate. Bailiff two is the existing current employee rate. So I wanted to highlight those as you kind of read through the schedule. Section three of the body of the ordinance on page two and three, this is a section, a new section from prior pay ordinances, and it identifies certain certifications that employees in the engineers' office and Public Works' office, when they obtain those certifications, and there is training work that they need to do to obtain those, then we're recognizing that with a certain amount per hour increase to their rate of pay. And so Section Three identifies four different certifications, and then identifies in Section B, the different employees that can get increases based on those certifications. Then also under Section Eight, this has been changed a bit from the prior ordinance. In A through D, it identifies the source of funding to pay for the compensation of particular employees. As you know, that there are employees at City Hall that provide services for sewer work and also provide services for the streets work in our community. And therefore, it is appropriate and legal to pay those employees, not only from the general fund, but also from other funds, the Sewer Enterprise Fund and the Street Fund. So this lays out those percentages of where we receive the source of money to pay for particular positions in the city. So that is laid out, hopefully with a little more clarity than it has been in the past. And then finally, the pay schedule. This pay schedule, as you can see at the top, it identifies a 3% increase from the last year's pay schedule for, and these are for the non-union employees. You know, union contracts are handled by the collective bargaining agreements, which you approve, and they're three-year contracts. This pay schedule, and this ordinance, only applies to the non-union employees. And you'll see that, again, that it includes a 3% increase, which is what the mayor had explained during her report. So I wanted to just identify some particular proportions of that pay ordinance that you should kind of focus in on as you read it, and then eventually you'll vote on passage of that ordinance. Are there any questions about the budget ordinance or the pay ordinance?
Oh, thank you.
I just, excuse me, wanted to clarify for that section concerning the engineers and those licensers, as that stated. Previously, those were broken out as different positions on the pay schedule. If anyone had seen the pay schedule previously, we had some positions marked out. There is one particular credential that the city engineer had obtained this year, so we decided to go back and make changes. As we have these number of different licenses that our engineering staff is working toward, that they're compensated for those. So worked quite extensively with engineer Matt Watson to determine what would be fair and equitable amounts to be added to those pay schedules. And this is a way that we can, those folks can add those credentials, get compensated for it, and then we're not kind of, for lack of a better term, muddying the waters in our pay schedule by putting annual increases on those amounts. Instead, they're just compensated for those new licenses.
Engineer Watson explained that in his budget update.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And one of the benefits, too, that the city receives by having in-house people, that means that there are certain projects we don't need to contract outside the city for. So, you know, it adds, it saves money in that regard. Are there any other questions regarding those two ordinances? Seeing none, that concludes my report. Thank you.
We are now under written communications.
Thank you. We have Mayor's Letter Regarding Scott Herniman's Resignation From the Civil Service Commission Effective December 31, 2023.
Thank you. This mayor's letter regarding this will be held on file in the clerk's office.
And we have a letter from Columbia Gas of Ohio dated November 21, 2023, regarding their upcoming application to Puco, requesting recovery of the 2023 infrastructure replacement costs that they want to go into effect May 2024.
This will also be held on file in the clerk's office.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone wishing to address counsel may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to myself. All right, we are now under motions. Is there any motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
We have Resolution Number 23-31, introduced by Chris Mansour. Resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in Ohio's Urban Forestry Grant Program, Emerging Programs 2023, to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Resolution 23-31.
Ordinance Number 23-72, introduced by Daniel Perry. Ordinance Enacting Chapter 343 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, Allowing and Regulating Underspeed and Utility Vehicle Use Within the City of Tiffin and Declaring an Emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-72. Councilmember Perry.
Yeah, I'd like to ask for passage of Ordinance 23-72.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-72. Is there a second? Councilmember Mansour.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Councilmember Reesner.
This is the third time this has been up for counsel in the past few years. I just want to say that, like, as I talk to people, residents around town, I often equate this to bicycles. And I don't know if that was a perfect analogy because I've never gotten in a bicycle accident. And I think that's because I wore bright colors, I kept the bike in good condition, and I followed the law. And that's why I was disappointed when I heard that there was a golf cart that was on West Market Street, right in front of Westgate Four-Lane Highway. So I'd just leave it at the, something that was told to me when I got my driver's license a little over 30 years ago. Driving is a big responsibility and a privilege, and please drive defensively. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we will first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
Spar.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 23-72 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-77, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept a permanent easement from AFLP, 1150 Mall Road LLC, or current property owner at 1150 Mall Road in Tiffin for storm sewer purposes.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-77. Councilmember Mansour.
I will move for passage of Ordinance 23-77.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-77. Is there a second? Councilmember Wilkins.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we will first vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-77 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-79, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications, advertise for and receive bids, and recommend and execute a contract for the 2024 street paving program and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-79. Councilmember Mansour.
I move for passage of 23-79.
Thank you. There's a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-79. Is there a second? Councilmember Spar.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll first vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of 6 to 0. We'll now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-79 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-81, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for engineering and design services for the replacement of a culvert on South Sandusky Street.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-81. Councilmember Mansour.
I move for passage of Ordinance 23-81.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-81. Is there a second? Councilmember Reesner.
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, we will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-81 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-82, introduced by Cheyenne Thacker. Ordinance authorizing directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for the preparation of a safety study for the West Market Street corridor between US 224 and Hopewell Avenue.
Thank you. This is the third reading of Ordinance 23-82. Councilmember Reesner.
I move for the passage of 23-82.
Thank you. There is a motion for passage of Ordinance 23-82. Is there a second? Councilmember Mansour.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, we will vote on the passage.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mansour.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Reesner.
Yes.
And Spar.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-82 passes with a vote of 6 to 0.
Ordinance Number 23-91, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending Chapter 197 of the Tiffin Codified Ordinances, regarding the City Income Tax Code to comply with recent state statutory changes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-91.
Ordinance Number 23-92, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending Section 135.03 of Tiffin Codified Ordinances, clarifying the composition of the city's Investment Advisory Committee and approving the city's revised investment policy.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-92.
Ordinance Number 23-93, introduced by Chris Mansour. Ordinance authorizing the chief of the Fire Rescue Division to execute an addendum to an agreement for mutual aid with the Fosteria Police Division, Tiffin Police Department, Fosteria Fire Department, and Seneca County Sheriff's Office for certain law enforcement purposes and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-93.
Ordinance Number 23-94, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Annual ordinance appropriating certain sums from all city funds for current and other expenditures of the city of Tiffin for fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-94.
Ordinance Number 23-95, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance amending and restating Ordinance Number 22-112, the city pay ordinance, to comply with the state of Ohio minimum wage law to establish appropriate rates of compensation for certain city employees and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-95.
Ordinance Number 23-96, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds and payment of bond and loan principal and interest and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-96.
Ordinance Number 23-97. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from 101 General Fund to the 242 Park and Recreation Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-97.
Ordinance Number 23-98, introduced by Kevin Reesner. Ordinance authorizing the transfer of funds from the 552 Sewer Revenue Fund to the 557 Combined Sewer Separation Fund and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. This is the first reading of Ordinance 23-98.
And that concludes the legislation.
Thank you. We are now under other business. Is there any other business to come forward house this evening? Councilmember Perry.
Curiosity question. Next meeting, we won't be reading any of these ordinance that were just read tonight for the first time, right? So these will all be voted on by the new members.
Unless you suspend.
Right.
Several of these need to be enacted this year.
Okay.
The budget ordinance, the pay ordinance. There's even Resolution 23-31 about the Urban Forestry Grant that is, has to be applied for by the 29th of this month. So there's multiple ones that the administration probably will ask for suspension.
Because my thought is it might not be fair for five new members coming in to really understand these ordinances to be then voting on them for a third time is just what I was thinking, but.
City Administrator.
So I think you could make a recommendation that all of these ordinances that are on the current schedule get added to, or you can make a change to your special meeting to have all of those read for a second time at the next meeting.
Because I'd feel more comfortable having all these wrapped up as this body before, you know, you throw these off on a new member that wouldn't really know. They might know, and I don't want to take it, you know, they might be. But do we make a motion now to have those read at the next meeting, or?
The meeting notice, and the meeting was called by, was it called by the president?
I believe so.
And so you can amend your call notice for the meeting. And so you can amend your call notice for the meeting. There'll have to be a new notice. Thank you, Ann, again. Yeah, I know. But I think that makes sense, you know, so that we read those a second time and then a third time. And so the docket will be cleared of legislation for the first of the year.
So when I make my amended announcement, do I have to list every single one of these?
You could just, you could say for your meeting that it's...
Any existing...
2391 through 98.
Okay.
Inclusive of all those, and Resolution 2331.
Okay. Through 98, and then Resolution... Okay. Well, I can actually make that amended announcement at this time. So our December 11th special city council meeting, I believe, is that at 5:30 p.m.? At 5:30 p.m. The purpose of this will also to be including the reading of Resolution 23-31, as well as ordinances 23-91 through Ordinance 23-98, and any other business that may come before council this evening. Anything else for council this evening? Okay, if there's nothing else, we can adjourn. Thank you all.